He was taught to read in the third grade. And his greatest pleasure in his chair is to read a book. So that is what he's doing right now instead of being here. The press and library staff is very knowledgeable and helpful to the people they use to write for. When I'm going to the library, I see patrons checking out books and children watching through the story hour and checking out their books. The library is a source of education for all people, continually educating them. And my dad, the vast assortment of fiction, history, many other subjects. Newspapers are all in the walls of that library down the street. It's nice to find the book you want. The librarians can help you. Or if I see a book online, I'd like to read it. Next time I'm in the library, it's waiting on that shelf up there with mine on it. And it's like, I'm showing faithful to the people that use the library. The county budget of the library, the cost of the funding is spread out throughout county, just like any other departments I've funded. All of them have their share of the resources of the grand county. And please do not withdraw my burden from the county. Grand County funding. Please each of you, time to read this article in the fire from the press. That is the Grand County Library, fire to the bank. We're the library. There's a headline and it continues to run by the church. That the Grand County Library is fired to civic. So they, they show rings down. What did they last week? All I can say is thank you. Thank you.
Is it on? Is it on? My name is Charlene Morris. I'm an appointed member of the Grand County Budget Committee. I've served three terms, according to the county budget. On county website, I turned hands in 2026. That means I would serve four years. I would like to first address some of the misinformation that I saw published on social media regarding the budget process. A post on Facebook from Grand County Library and say the library committee states that the public didn't get a chance to voice their opinions at the budget committee meetings. Another post states that the first budget meeting petition with 407 signatures was presented. Both of those statements are incorrect. The 2526 first budget meeting was April 2nd, 2025. It was properly advertised as well as the May 8th. I chaired the budget meeting on May 8th, 2025. That was the meeting in which the petition and a large contingent of citizens were present. It takes very little time to make sure what is said and printed is factual. Inflammatory statements over social media create hot chaos, but it also creates action. Just look at all of you there. But where are all of you when it comes to time? Where are all of you when it comes to time to volunteer for those committees and budgets? And boards? I was the only person to apply for the budget committee. Since 1957, when a librarian, Bookmobile, according to Kipman, wherever she's at, stated. I've lost my train of thought just a little bit, sorry. There's been a Bookmobile for many years at the Prairie City School. In 1957, I was six years old. That might have been when I got my first library card. Because I remember going to the Bookmobile once a month in front of a school and checking out my several books that we were allowed to check out as a pretty young girl. So I've had a library card for a pretty long time. I took my kids to the library. They had a summer reading program, maybe like on Tuesdays at kind of 10:00 for a couple of hours. So I've had a library card a really long time. But since 1957, the library has relied upon the general fund tax dollars for most of its revenue. The Library Foundation was formed August 13th, 1992, despite what social media says. And that comes directly from the Oregon Secretary of State's website. The annual reports from 1992 to 2008 aren't available for viewing. The annual reports from 2008 to 2019 state the Library Foundation is for public benefit. The 2020 through 2021 annual report says that the foundation works to support our local library providing resources for a summer reading program and assisting with purchasing needed equipment. The 2324 annual report says it works to support our local library and providing resources for a summer reading program and assist fee with purchases, purchasing needed equipment. In the past three years that I've been on the budget committee, the foundation has not stepped forward one time to offer any financial resources. I have been in county court meetings where the librarian librarian has talked about programs paid for by the foundation. I'm not sure that that's actually the correct way to budget. But maybe the funds should be deposited with the county and expended as other grant funds through the county budgeting process. I think it's time for the foundation to step up and help financially. The foundation's website says it was created to help raise funds to the library through fundraisers, temple campaigns, money donations for books, summer reading programs, speakers, and cultural events. It also says it's to raise awareness and public support for the library. And the library clearly needs some financial support. And the foundation has some of that in their cards. There's not going to be a new library built. There's not going to be a new courthouse built. There's not going to be a new school built in school district three. So the foundation might as well hope, fund the library. The library committee and many of the citizens maybe don't realize the impact we have that have occurred over the past three years that deeply impacts the county agricultural community. Since the mid 1990s, the county has funded an assistant water master. I'm not proficient in their job duties. I do know that they regulate the water from the John Day River as tributaries to the irrigation that's allowed by farmers and ranchers in the John Day Basin. In December of 2021, seeing the handwriting on the wall, the assistant water master at the time resigned to another job and has been no funding since for the assistant water master. The water master himself is a state employee and for the budget year 2526, the county budget is $1,000 for fuel supplies. The water master for the John Day Basin has a duty area to try and serve and the system is extremely vital. The budget for the assistant water master in 2019, 2020 was $83,000. 2020, 2021 was $91,000. At the same time, the library was funded in 2019 at $200,000. The same situation applies for predator control or animal damage control. County has partially funded this federal employee position for many years. Research shows, excuse me, my mouth is getting a little bit dry, 1924. For a few years way back, the Grand County Farm Bureau donated funds to help offset the cost of the position. 2025, 26 funding for this position is $45,000. Last year it was $93,000 and the year before that, I believe it was $73,000. And the library was over $200,000. Animal damage control is vital to the agricultural community, dealing with wolves, cougar, stumps, beavers, squirrels, birds, disease threats, livestock, predation, crop losses. The library gets for 2025, 26, $239,000 and animal damage control gets $45,000. The county's general fund revenue tax is calculated at $1.9 million for the 2526 budget year. The sheriff's office and the jail budget is $3.2 million with revenue of $475,000. Where does the balance of the funds come from? Everyone wants public safety. We use $2.2 million of unappropriated funding funds to balance the general fund budget. There's only one more year of that funding available. I think the county should continue to partly fund the library, but it's certainly time to change the way this is done. And I stated that at the last budget meeting of the year. The county is headed towards bankruptcy and that's not an inflammatory statement, it's the truth. I think the agricultural citizens would certainly support an annual membership fee for the library, but they also want equality from the county's court. I commend your outreach. I have no problem with the taxing history, but it needs to be county wide. And the foundation needs to help financially as well as create fundraising from the library board. Your letter to the county court was well written, thought out, and shows your commitment to finding a solution. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Beth Spell. I live in John Day. I'm one of those lucky people who grew up in John Day and started my library in career in that little library around the corner from now the Grand County Bank building. And so I can probably say that I'm a library person for 70 plus years of those 90 something years that the library has been pointing to John Day. Just had dad that that's not part of bringing us. When I was a child, my dad took me to the library every week and I was restricted to 14 books a week. The library was there for me and I wanted to be there for the future. Walter Cronkite, a respected broadcaster during this, offered a strong statement in favor of public libraries that is often used to promote them. Whatever the costs for our libraries, the price is cheap compared to that Asian nation. This quote emphasizes the critical role libraries play in fostering and informing society and suggests that investment in libraries is far less than the cost of a nation lacking in knowledge and understanding. The library's current budget is $239,438 for the 2025, 26 principal year. The county's total budget for that same time period is $88.7 million. That means the library budget is point, point 27% of the total budget. Point 27% of the total budget. Yes. My question is this, and I know I'm not supposed to ask questions, but I phrase them in this way. What does this say about the values and priorities of our county government? That you are willing to give up a valuable community asset instead of taking the time to find ways to trim the overall budget by this very small amount? In our personal budgets, when funds fall short, we make adjustments in our overall balance rather than giving up one item that is necessary to our well-being. I admire your support to not only look at the effects a library and culture will have on our communities, but also to the message you are giving to those who may consider becoming part of our community. And so I quote from the internet. Libraries, a, what is it, Leon? So it doesn't give you an honor. Libraries far beyond being mere repositories of books play a multifaceted role in building stronger, more informed, and resilient communities. They are evolving to address diverse needs in the digital age, impacting areas like education, social connection, and even well-being and development. The diverse evolving roles of libraries demonstrates their irreplaceable value as community anchors that go far beyond books, making them essential for a thriving and resilient community. Please make that your goal, to have a thriving and resilient community. To me.
Thank you.
We're gonna like this, I'm really sure. Um, back in 300 AD, the father of a woman named, is anybody history about in America that wants to hear? You know what happened? They lost their mother. And they plunged the world into the doggies. And that's, that's my comment. Um, we're in a time of thrive in education. That's how we grow. And I don't think we have to persuade you of that. I think what you have to do is get your heads together and figure out what you can do to fix this. Um, we can't be without our education or we will be plunged into dogs. So I'm not going there. Thank you.
Uh, Dan, what balls have Garrett got?
None, no.
I like to focus the applause a little. Given the massive outreach from the community about wanting to halt this operation that's happening, um, I'm no stranger to how much the public has started to tune out the struggles of local government and funding issues and the challenges that our governments are facing in trying to provide the same level of services we produce funding. I would really encourage you though, to show your effort in working with the community on a solution by deferring the next hearing. If you continue to stink over through this process, in case to the community, that you are not interested in working with them and that you are just trying to go through the process. Simple. We'll just be good.
Yeah. I believe a lot of libraries are slaughtered and often work, but they're not getting into our next step. It adds budget.
Debbie Clark.
Good evening and thank you for letting me speak. My name's Debbie Clark. I'm from Prairie City. And I don't have a written speech. I just have some quick bullet points because I feel like a lot of us in this community, um, we've heard from educators and librarians and, you know, people like that. But I'm just a random citizen and I have random interactions with our library. It was the only place that I could go to have a test proctor for me. I had to take a test for a class I was taking and there were no other proctors available to me. The library did that for me. Um, I take my grandkids there when I can and I've seen in those, in those visits, I've seen groups of teenage kids, instead of out creating problems, they're at the library playing a tabletop game. They're at the library on their computers because they may or may not have internet access at their homes. Um, other than the city parks, I feel like there's not a lot of places for our kids to go at any age, from young people to older kids. There's not a lot of things for them to do or places for them to go. Um, I work at the care center in Prairie City and I in absolutely no way speak for Blue Mountain Care Center or Blue Mountain Hospital District. I speak for myself. When I say that our library brings books to my residents, it allows them an opportunity that they don't normally get because they can't just run to the library. It's a very valuable service. Um, I know there was one other thing that was very random that I wanted to bring up. Um, the Libby Book App. You have to have a library card to use the Libby Book App and I use that app quite often to check out books. So the library affects my life and probably many of yours in different ways than just a written speech. So I hope that, um, I hope that you will consider funding the library until some other uh, plan of action can be taken. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you. There's a lot of people here and I'm not much for speaking and I just want to make sure I'm talking loud enough. Can you guys hear the, the sweat dripping off my brow? Okay, I'm, I just, I live in Bear Valley. I've been up in Bear Valley for 47 years and my, I have two daughters, both of whom spend an awful lot of time at the library. As, as my wife also, she's there quite often and if she did not, I'd pick up books for her. So we, we, we use the library quite a bit. The thing that I, I, I realize you, I don't know all the ins and outs of budget, but you know, when you look at just over a quarter of 1% of the budget, it just doesn't sound right. Well, perhaps it's not, but that's how the math works out. The other thing that I wanted to bring up was that in talking with the three of you, I learned that the job of the elected official is to try to help and solve problems and listen to the people. And well, I, I think there's a lot of people here talking to you. And I really hope you get right on the, on the ball and figure something out to keep this going. Uh, the, you, the building was given to us from the Oliver's family and all we gotta do is keep it going. So please, please work at that. Thank you.
Liz Paul. Liz Paul.
No. Hi, my name is Liz Burkin and I'm pretty new to John Day, so I'll keep my comments really short. Um, I actually don't, I haven't gotten a John Day library card yet. I'm really embarrassed about that fact. It's usually one of the first things I do when I move to a new place. Um, I have family kids, but at the same time, I just want to say that I really value libraries and as a community member, I take being a community member very seriously. I want my tax dollars to go to the library. I want my tax dollars to go to support all these folks who came out tonight and have kids and make sure that everyone has access to information and services in the community. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, folks. I wasn't really prepared to speak tonight, but I feel strongly about the library because it's always been a sanctuary for me, as it has for a lot of you. And it's always, um, it's a place to go and research and learn and continue in education. And it's also a place for people to go and post. And as Debbie Clark said, um, she needed to go and take a test. And this also happened to my son, um, his case in point, is a college student. He had to take a test which would end up lasting until after 6:00 or 8:00. About 6:00, 6:00 to 9:00. And he, we didn't have a quiet place for him to go. We didn't have internet to support his test. And he talked to Chris, the librarian, and she said, don't worry about it. I'll take care of it. And he did. So because she breaks his heart and generously kept the library open for him, he was able to take this test. Otherwise, he wouldn't have been doing it. And so he's very grateful for that. And he in fact reminded me three times, he's 21 years old. And he in fact reminded me three times, he's 21 years old, he reminded me three times to come for the speaking tonight. So, I support, we support keeping the library open for all students, college students, you know, from all the young, young kids, and all the lifelong work in this town and in the whole county. Keep opportunities open for the people around home. Thank you.
Thank you.
I've just sent her a big file. Melissa, I sent you a request, so you should get that on your computer. Can you hear us?
I read the letter. Am I getting the letter?
Just a moment. Okay, can you test the microphone?
Yes, can you hear me?
Okay, we're, we're trying it out, Melissa, if you can test.
Okay, can you just read my letter, because that's what I, I sent in a letter.
Oh, okay, do you not, do you have the letter? Would you?
Pull it up from my computer real quick. Hi, would you want me to go ahead and add screen in this?
Yes.
So, what I said first, and then. So, my name's Melissa, I am from Monument. I was going to raise hearing, came back five ago. Can you guys hear me?
And can you speak louder?
You don't have the letter that we can read? It's not gonna work.
You can't hear me?
No. It's, I, it's not you, it's the system.
Oh, Stephanie. Stephanie should've read it. I can have Stephanie read it. On the new computer, sorry.
Hello. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, so I didn't have any. I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, and I didn't have anything prepared, so I was a fever. I am not from this town, I'm not an educator, I don't have kids, but coming to this town, having a library, to access very important things as a student. And I would also say that, I understand that, sorry, I'm getting nervous now. I understand that it is difficult to try and fight money for something. I think just something so important and that that there is so much value in having a library. And to say that the economy is the reason that the library might be closing or without it, without a library would be encouraging the people to come work, have to feed into our economy, and it is important in that sense. And the other thing I would like to say is that we do all have phones, we all have access to the internet, but what is on the internet can be controlled, and what is in the library is a lot harder to control. So, I would just say that access access and freedom of information is extremely important for people to drive. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm working my two friends work. My name is Ceylan, I'm a retired student teacher. I bring all my lessons of teaching, I always place great importance on reading. And I found that if a student is a good reader, he or she will be a good student. So, what I always try to do is I try to build a little mini library in my room. Every year I would try to gain a lot of my class budget just to stock up my little library. And I found that if I have the books right there in the room, the kids would go and browse through those books, and then they got free time. And I can tell them what books to look for, what each letter, they have to look great for them. And when I've been teaching certain topics in class, like in all grade that I'm teaching are about dinosaurs, I would go to the library and I would check out all the dinosaur book in the library, and I would work into my room so that the kids would have a resource to be writing their book. And if I'm doing my sixth grade, if I'm doing a report on EJ, the student of EJ, again, I would go to the library and I would tell Chris, and she would find me all the books on EJ, and I would take it to my room, share it with my students. And radios here that I was teaching in the previous school, they still have the book mobile that comes by screen. And you can see the joy of my kids, very first on that day when they know the book mobile is coming. So, I would take them out and they would check out all the books, and when they come in there, so happy to share all those books that they had borrowed from the book mobile. And I'm wondering, like, during these three long summer months, where could kids go get their book? If there are no libraries, they would not be able to get their books. Okay, so to me, the library is very important. Even at my age, okay, I still get a throw when I go to the library to check out books. And then I always tell Chris, the librarian, so many books, so much time. And my husband, I've been here for over 25 years now, and I think I finished reading a small version of the library. And there are the books, and more, what more I believe is I can get the books, I mean, the briefest type of book in our library, she can get it anywhere else, I through the state system. So, I was telling my husband, if you find a book there, look, tell Chris, and she can solve it from all over the state all day to get a book. And sometimes I just go to Barnes and Noble, and I see a new book, and I say, "Uh-uh, I got to tell Chris to get that book for me." And sure, and she would. Tell you the library is, I don't know all the books, but to me, the library is very important. I don't mind staying in a small town like this as long as I have.
So I can just walk into a church like we can. Main idea, just the main ideas, because everybody's covered all the important things. And the main idea to me is, as elected officials, we trust you to find what is important to you, and also to lightways to benefit. And this library department has done an amazing job in making $239,000 last, every year, and heard the amazing services that they provide across the county to people of all types, to people of all backgrounds. It's extraordinary what is being accomplished. In addition to the fact that being non, what is it, penny wise, non foolish, this is what I think the county was considering is a move that will be penny wise, non foolish. It does not make sense to cut a library department for such a paltry amount that covers so many people. Anyone who can come in and be serviced, be helped at the library in a county that is roughly the size of the state of committee. For residents to get any help, to get any books, to access the internet if they need it, they have to drive three hours, they need a college bus to drive three hours, or two hours to Baker. So, make the investment in our economy. As so many people have said already, the investment is in our economy to help us grow, to help us meet the future needs, to help small businesses, to help workers get trained. And don't be penny wise, I'm sorry, penny wise and non foolish. Invest in our communities. Thank you.
Melissa emailed me her letter that she would like read. I'm gonna skip over kind of some of it, it's a little bit long. But she would like everyone to know that, her name is Melissa Hatley. She was born and raised in Monument and moved away after high school was returned in 2020. And she's, everywhere she has lived, she's always had access to a public library. As a young adult, I did not always have the means to buy books, CDs, and movies. The library provided a means to a world of reading and having access to learning. Growing up, I was an avid reader, as a lot of my family members were and still are. In Monument, we have access to the Grand County Library's Bookmobile. She expresses how big of a loss that has been for the community of Monument. I do want to say that Melissa is a huge advocate, and she has been attending our committee meetings to try and figure out how to get access to those seniors that live out in Monument, if she says. That when she returned to, she returned to Monument, I worked in John Day three days a week and two days at home. I was happy to know the library was still open, but it made me sad to see the condition of the old and cramped building, the limited hours and resources. There is very small staff, and the annual threat of budget cuts must be exhausting and stressful. I go to the library at least once a week, and I've had to work around the library's hours and days. It makes me very sad and angry at the same time to think that the county would stop financially supporting the library and live cutting back in other areas of the county budget. The priorities of the county budget committee and court are ludicrous. And the library has been at the bottom for a very long time, when it should be a bright spot in the county. There is no public promotion of the library use, and outreach to the county outside of John Day and Canyon City is pretty much nonexistent. Also, due to lack of funding, the library has access to many other libraries, part of the Sage Library System in eastern Oregon, but many Grand County residents do not know that. The elderly and disabled residents are, or even financially limited residents who pay taxes and do not live in John Day or Canyon City cannot always get to town to the library. They are paying taxes for a service they could access if they knew more about the programs and services provided by the library. Also, not everyone outside of John Day and Canyon City has access to the internet or transportation to use the library. Residents can give books, CDs, DVDs, etc., mail to them, or brought to the Grand County Library from another library through the Sage Library System. They can give books on CD and large print, etc. It's a shame that the people who represent this county want to stop financially supporting the library. The library is not closed, it needs to be supported more, not less. Grand County cannot lose any more business, resources, community programs, and services. Grand County is part of the worldwide silver tsunami that is happening, and we will have more elderly people aging here. Taking away access to a local library is an awful idea. I know many elderly and sheltered people who thrive on reading and cannot afford to buy books. If you do cut off support to the library, please allow time for the Save Our Library Committee to find a new avenue to keep the library open and funded. Thank you, Melissa Hatley.
I believe it's really awesome. Sure, they're awesome, I mean, anywhere you can see, will, the library is stood there. And also, a lot of things. Y'all would want to see, it's probably right, so, I'm just saying, but it's not a better street. Scan that right. But we also will be excited.
I just have three words to say about Chris and her crew. Loyal, faithful, trustworthy.
I'm also, the library committee has stepped up before. So, they're all very thankful, coming out. It, it helps us a lot. I, I want you all to know that you can come and see me at any time at the shop, or call me, and I can help explain what we're dealing with. I completely understand that we need it, we want it, we got it. But I think we also need to get together, collaborate, and figure out a solution that benefits us all as a whole. So, again, please, come by the shop, see me. Wilson Clubbing, Fabrication Shop, it's on Lower Yard Road, and there is about every day, all day. Or call me, my account and phone number is online. Or you can call my job phone, 6201298. Please reach out. We can't make decisions without your guys involved. Again, thank you for coming out and being a part.
I'd like to thank everybody for, in spite of this crucial thing about the library, I can't keep the library, although there are restrictions. General budget, and we see 26.7% come. We are also looking at hours in the county, and one thing that I've been out with a lot of people who wrote me emails, I pointed out the idea of this tax district. Definitely taking that library of writing from the very good funds that come to our general, and to make it more study, that's the case, of those ladies that were carrying the book from the wheels. I know there's a bunch of people in here that are equally, like, putting in the sweat and tear to see if we can do that, if it's possible. I think the county would also work the process of making sure the building and the assets of the library are somehow have a way to go to that library to run if, if the money's a bear. But by 26.7, it doesn't look good, that's what's happened. Bills are falling in there. Bills are falling in this county. We have a lot of issues to look at. But the power of my fear to run for the year to die, is if we renovate that power from our county and we get the funds to keep our library open, is that possible? I don't know. I'm willing to work with you. I'm willing to give you that. At least, Jeff and Brittany, give me some ideas, form a committee, whatever you would like to do. We would like to support you as well. Thank you.
I miss the past.